Hello, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, November 19, 2020. And we'll open with on item 2.1, which is a Pledge of Allegiance that will be offered by Lauren Smith. If you want to just come up to the mic.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Lauren. We would do a roll call. We do have a full quorum. We have both alternates here as well, but those that will be sitting today and voting will be Andrea, Lauren, Andy, Brody, Adam, and Jackson. Are there any conflicts of interest from the Planning Commission on any of the items? No. All right. Seeing none, we'll then go to item 2.4, which is approval of minutes for October 1st, 2020 Planning Commission meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes on October 1st, 2020.
A motion by Lauren, all in favor, or I guess?
I'll second it.
Second by Adam. Then we'll call for a vote. Andrea?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Brody?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll then move on to administrative items. And before we do that, we do have several items on for public hearings tonight. I'll just go through our public heating, hearing procedure and how that'll work. Public hearings for this meeting will be conducted both in person and electronically. Any person interested in addressing the commission may submit a comment by emailing recorder@hairman.org or by visiting hairman.org/agendas and minutes where there is a link to fill out any online public comment form. Your statement will be read into the public record. All comments must include the respondent's name and the public hearing file name, number. And then also just those that are present. The public comment and policy procedure. The purpose of public comment is to allow citizens to address items on the agenda. Citizens requesting to address the commission will be asked to complete a written comment form and present it to Wendy, Deputy Recorder. In general, the Chair will allow an individual two minutes to address the commission. A spokesperson recognized as representing a group in attendance may be allowed up to five minutes. And this applies to all public hearings. Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to item 3.1, request for preliminary plot approval for Mountain Ridge and look for city staff for more details.
All right. If you guys are okay, I'll do 3.1 and 3.2 kind of at the same time. And then we'll have two different kind of discussions.
That works great.
So 3.1 is the preliminary plat approval for Mountain Ridge phases three, four, and nine through 16. We approved phases one through two and five through eight a couple of months ago. And this is now the rest of the phases for the Mountain Ridge development. So you can see where it is there, just in the east Herman area, east of Mountain View corridor. Again, this is a preliminary plat. So this is a public hearing. And then the planning commission makes a decision based on the ordinances. This is part of a PUD overlay zone. And again, there was a development agreement approved for this in April. So this is their overall approved plan. Again, that you guys approved earlier this year. And this lays out all the phases. Again, we approved a part of the phases earlier. And now we're approving remainder of the phases that you can see here, this area. It's everything kind of north of the church property, the proposed church site there, north of the high school, everything on the west side of Sentinel, and then the rest of it on the, on the east side. So this goes through all of it. Again, there is, let me find the number here. 325 townhomes in these phases and 62 single family lots. Go through all these phases. This also includes the 10 acre park. It's phase 10. This park will be planned and built by the city, but it is included in one of these phases. And then item 3.2 is the site plan. So again, with the PUD, you have to have two applications. One for the plat to actually plat the lots. The other is the final site plan approval for each phase. So again, 325 townhomes and 62 single family lots in these phases. You guys did approve design guidelines and those were attached to their development agreement. So I've included just a couple of pages of them here just to show that they have architectural standards. They have to meet roof pitches. Their setbacks are laid out in here. Talks about emphasis on the corners, window treatments. These are the proposed townhome elevations. And they've highlighted it with color so you can see, know how they'll be, not have the same elevations next door to each other. And like we talked about with the earlier phases, they have added the side, kind of an accentuated side elevation for those corners that will be shown out on the, on the main streets. And they've indicated where those corners will be. This is all the open space. Again, a lot of this is coming in with these phases, the 10 acre park next to the canal. And then it's about a five acre park up on 138. Again, both of those will be designed by the city. The five acre park. I'm going to say this wrong, but the five acre park is in the development agreement to be held as commercial for a year, two years. I'll look it up while you guys are talking about it. And then developed as a park. Again, some of the landscaping plans here. That's what I've got. So again, two different things. The public hearing is for the preliminary plat, which is 3.1. And then the site plan 3.2 is more the design landscaping element. So any questions for me or the applicant is also on the line?
The only question I have is, so it'll be held as commercial property. And if not, it'll go to a park, which is fine either way. That doesn't change the amount of required open space they have, does it? Meaning, meaning it doesn't drop them in any categories where they don't meet the master development agreement if that doesn't become a park.
Well, I did the math on that and they're still above.
Okay.
They're still above.
Yeah, just confirming that. I assumed that was the case, but I wanted to just make sure. Okay. That was the only question to you. If the applicants online, if there's additional information they'd like to share.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can, Brandon. Thank you.
Oh, great. Last time I had to call in, so I'm glad you guys can hear me here. Yeah. So thank you, Bran, and thank you, Commission, for your time this evening. You know, we
Do you mind just sharing your name and who you're with?
Oh, sure. Yeah. Brandon Watson with Edge Homes. I've also got Brandon Parr. He's a part of our design team here. And if you've had a chance to drive out there on site, we've actually started construction on the first few phases. And kind of have, we're, we're super excited about it to see this start to take shape. So hopefully you guys have had an opportunity to drive out there and take a peek at the development. But it was interesting today. I gave a presentation to our sales team and you know, they just have, have had a lot of citizens reach out and ask a lot of interest about this particular piece of property. So excited to be able to present this to you this evening and and you know, again, you've, you've got a lot of good citizens out there that are looking forward to this. And we appreciate your time this evening, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. And yeah.
All right. Thank you so much, Brandon. Are there any questions for the applicant at this time? All right. If there's none from the Planning Commission, then Brendan will actually mute you and open the public hearing for a little bit. Oh, Jackson, do you have a question?
No, I don't. Sorry.
Okay. All right. Then at this time, we'll open the public hearing for this item.
Does Wendy have one to read in? Do you have one to read in? I think Wendy.
I'll let Wendy read the comment that was presented to them.
This comment was emailed in. It says, I am opposed to this kind of housing density. It looks more like pods of military barracks. No parking for visitors. Think of it, 325 townhomes. Let's say 80 of them have company at any given time. Where is the guest parking? I live on a street of individual homes, only 16 homes up each side of the street. Some days, street parking can be tough. Look at all our townhome communities. Unit parking is limited. Streets are narrower. Traffic is overloaded. Guest parking almost nil. New subject, the townhouse itself. We need new local standards. I lived in a townhouse. The noise between units is unacceptable. Even built with a sound wall between units is not enough. It requires thicker walls or greater air pocket space or both between units to cut neighbor noise. There must be a lot of profit in building townhouses. Only 14% single family homes are being built. When is the city going to stop building townhouses and concentrate on building single family home communities? I am opposed to any rezoning to build higher density housing developments. That was from James Eric Brown.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other public comments, then we will close the public hearing at this time and turn to the Planning Commission for discussion.
I'd like to make some comments. It's, it's not so much about the plat, but more about the, the design of the buildings. A couple of things that I found in the design guidelines that I'd like to read. Um, one is architectural styles. It reads in the design guidelines that says on page 78 of our packet, all edge homes for plans are encouraged to meet for Mountain Ridge and any of the, their available floor plans may be used. A variety of facade styles are available for each floor plan. The farm style facade is favored for the character of the community. But any of the available facade styles may be used. Architectural styles should contribute to a unique sense of place. When I was reviewing the different elevations, my feedback would be that they all look pretty much the same with minor material changes. So that's one comment. Another piece of the design guidelines, which is around building colors. There's a picture on page 79 that illustrates a four sided architecture. If we look at see page 81 in our packet. There's, I just have some comments about the, the side elevation. Just, I know this is more about the plat and things like that, but my feedback is the side elevations appear to me to be like a smaller home that had a large addition added to it. And so I just feedback for the developers to look at making some changes so the materials can wrap around the buildings. So it has that foresighted element versus what, what we get.
Thank you, Brody. Jackson, do you have some comments?
Mine is more about, I don't know if this is exactly a plat item or if it's a, a plan item. So I, so I'm not a hundred percent sure, but in phase nine, we show, you can see that there is a turn in to the slip road that is fairly close to the the intersection of Sentinel and 138. I'm assuming that that intersection, that Sentinel and 138 will get pretty busy. So I kind of feel like asking almost Andy, or sorry, even, sorry, not Andy, but to engineering as well. Is that, is that little turn in too close for the slip road or is that going to be okay?
That's a good question. Is engineering on?
Yeah, they are.
And then first, but to, but to say, I do really like the slip roads. So I almost wonder if that slip road will function better with only one entrance and exit as opposed to three. So we have two instead of three. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Josh. So the question was a reduction of the, the entrances from the slip lanes onto Sentinel Ridge?
Actually, preferably actually on 138, right there in, in, in phase nine. There are three entrances onto the slip road. And so
I'll have to go back and pull up. I, I agree with you. And we actually, you know, we worked with them to reduce the number of connections along Sentinel Ridge. So I, I would agree with you that reducing at least one of those connections, I think would be, would be better there and would help that function better.
I think just the one that's close to the corner on 138. I think it's it's not on Sentinel, it's on 138, but the one that's close to the intersection.
I agree. I agree with that. I guess the only issue I see with that is I think about it is if somebody was coming from 138 South from like Mountain View, for example, and if they lived in one of those houses there, just, you know, immediately in from that first action from the slip lane, they might not be able to get home and have to kind of, you know, go around the block if that makes sense.
Yeah. And part of my thought, and maybe just because I was once a teenage driver that did something stupid, but I could see myself turning into the slip lane, trying to avoid the intersection and going back out.
Yep. Yeah, no, I, I think that is a tricky spot that we need to take a, take a look at.
Maybe, maybe Josh, while you're on here as well, talking about the slip roads. And maybe you can just educate me. How do we prevent those becoming, like Jackson said, just a new speed route to try to get around things? Or, I mean, I can literally imagine somebody going pretty fast down Mountain, Mountain Ridge. Oh, and then just literally not even slowing down and peeling into those slip roads. Especially with that, that 17 age group that's up the road from there.
Yeah. I mean, you know, kids will be kids. That is a scary thought.
But do they have like a cutout? Is there something that makes it where it's, it's not possible to slip into those at a fast speed? That it's almost sharp enough. It's almost changed enough to where you can't just, you got to slow down to be able to pull into it enough. I mean, do you understand what I'm asking?
I, I do. I totally understand. I see what, I see what you're saying. I think the act of pulling into that slip lane, you know, it's, it's a fair, it's a fairly sharp, you know, movement you have to make into there. That's going to slow the cars down a lot. If was going to speed drastically through those, they would, you know, have to slam on the brakes, make that turn, and then really rapidly accelerate. Their narrower lane, you know, it's, it's not a really wide road through the slip lane. So I think it's going to feel more like a residential street. You know, as opposed to Sentinel Ridge. I, I think that's going to be something to keep an eye on though, to be honest. So.
Are they private or are they public, the slip lanes?
Those are public. They're, they're dedicated public.
Oh, okay.
No. Saying they're not.
Oh, maybe I have to go back and look at the plats.
I was gonna say, if they're not, what if we just had them? You have the sidewalk going through there where it almost looks like you could table it a little bit, like a lack of a better word, a speed bump that you can't do in public streets, but why couldn't we require that in private streets?
If we're not doing snow removal and I won't have the guys upstairs come down and, and be unhappy with me, I would be absolutely fine with that. I, I think if they're done well, they could look great, you know, with.
Well, I think that would, that would, that would address everybody's concern about traffic coming in. And some kid going flying through there and hits, has to go up over the sidewalk. They're going to not be able to go very fast.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree because if, if, because those are private and we're not having snow removal worried by the city. I think that, that the speed bumps are going to make a lot of sense because it's going to slow them down drastically. And all it'll take is one kid hitting that hard once and they're done doing that.
I, I think just table it like I wish we would do around City Hall. And I wish the city staff would actually top, think about changing some of that in logical areas.
You're right.
Sorry, did you hear that last comment?
I was just going to say, Chris, I think it would take one time for somebody to come screaming through there and hit one of those raised areas and, you know, bottom out their suspension or scrape their bumper and they probably wouldn't do it again. So.
Yeah. Yeah. So Officer Stromberg has a comment.
Sorry, Chris. Just for your information and consideration as you have this discussion, one of the primary reasons why we have discouraged speed bumps in the past on city streets is that statistically there's actually an increase in speed between the speed bumps because for some reason people feel like they need to make up for lost time. And so that's been a large discouragement on our part from placing speed bumps on public roads throughout the city over the last several years. And that's, that's some statistical studies that have been done. It's confirmed by some of our own traffic studies that are done in some surrounding areas here along the Wasatch Front. And so just keep that in mind. We're, we're all for any type of traffic mitigation and traffic calming measures. But, but hopefully we're not looking at speed bumps as the fix all to everything.
Well, what if we, what if you put an ordinary
These are table intersections. This is how I look at it.
Just table. Elevator walkways?
Elevated walkways. So that way, I actually think that'd be more of the risk. Somebody trying to blow through there and you guarantee that the people are being safe in that region.
So just north of Herman High School, the neighborhood that's located in Daybreak has those elevated walkways down the entire medium of that street. That's one over. And so that's one, I'm trying to think what road that'll be.
The center of the new Daybreak? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, the center. So every turn, and so every time you go down the middle and you turn, they're located on it. And I don't know if that's a solution. And it may be the solution is just making sure the turn is sharp enough that it's not something they can just glide into too much. They have to slow down on the turn. I'm just saying, I think there's something that needs to be considered because I like to believe somebody's not going to be going 50 down Sentinel Road and then turn into those. But if they're able to, they will.
Yeah. Chris, can I make a couple of comments?
Yes.
Cause I've been looking at this. So first, I guess we've got the, there's no sidewalk, I guess, to raise. You know, the sidewalks are on the interior of that the ramp. So there's not an opportunity, I don't think, to, to do a tabletop type situation. Because we don't want pedestrians.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't want pedestrians out there anyway. And I guess another quick question, I'm assuming this is a one way. Right? Road. There's not two ways, you, you know.
Yeah, those are both, those are all one way.
Right. They're all one way. So my thought is the Sentinel access, I think you've got enough of an angle. You're not going to get a lot of high speeds coming into that.
It's a sharp enough turn.
That is a sharp turn.
And they're narrow enough.
Yeah.
But I don't think you could speed through there. Yeah.
I'm with Jackson a little bit on the access 138. That does seem somewhat close to the intersection. I'm, I'm torn on that one because I can see the reason to, you know, have that there because you don't want all the traffic happening to come through the intersection, get into this, off from Sentinel, Sentinel Ridge and back into that, that whole area when you've got a lot of traffic. They probably just want to access those north facing homes.
Right.
In there as well. So maybe what it is, is we just slide that access down a little bit further away from the intersection, a little bit. And do it that way. Just so it's not right there. I also agree that it, it does seem a little close to Sentinel Ridge and 138.
Are you referencing 138 and Sentinel Ridge? Are you referencing the road over as well?
No, I'm looking just to Sentinel Ridge and 138.
That one, that one corner.
The one just
Just that one.
Sorry, I gotta zoom the inverse. I'm on my computer here.
So are you also including the one east?
Hold on.
Because I'm a little worried about the one east as well. You have one section going in, one going out, and one going down, all in the same area right there.
Yeah, I think, I think the other intersections are fine. I'm thinking just the major intersection.
Because I questioned that other one. I mean, could that be a problem having people pulling out, going down in and pulling in all there? Or is that really like a neighborhood road?
I don't know how else you do it though. I was
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
And I don't really have a concern with that.
Unless you have it going straight and you only go right out.
Well, because those are one way as well. So it is a right out only on that one.
Oh, I meant on the, on the other road, but no. I mean, they've done the research. I mean, if engineers, engineers okay with it, then I'll trust their judgment.
Yeah. My only thought is, is maybe some improvements here. I think I don't have any issues with what they've done. The tabletop, it, it won't work because we don't want the pedestrians on the outside of that, that area. We want them adjacent to the homes. Right? That's the way it's set up now. There's no sidewalk on the, you know, on the outside in the islands and things like that. So
Are you sure?
That's it.
There is, there is, there is a walk, doesn't it? It looks like there's a small walkway. Is that just a utility corridor right in front of the trees?
There's a walkway there. So you're, you're talking the entrance there, raising that entrance off from Sentinel Ridge?
I'm saying, if you look right by those trees, if you could zoom in, I can't tell. Is there a walkway right there?
No, there would be because that's along Sentinel Ridge. That's right. There is right through there, but I'm talking as you make the corner go around.
There's not one on Sentinel Ridge, it looks like.
One at a time. On Sentinel Ridge, there is a walkway on the slip road on the outside. On 138, there is not.
Okay. Right.
It's just a sidewalk on the inside.
Right. All I was talking about tabletop and Andy is the Sentinel Ridge piece.
Okay.
That sidewalk, because there is a sidewalk. And I was actually, I'm glad you're on the map. I was going to ask a question. What is going on with, as you come off Sentinel Ridge and you head in to the, where, where they're describing, why does it widen out weird right there? Is that a left only or a right in only? I can't figure that out.
I would think that is parking.
Yeah, I was just going to say, this is Josh in engineering. That's for parking along there. So parking.
I thought you couldn't do parking on a public street. Is that why it's private?
What do you mean?
I think so.
Parking, you can't park parallel on a public street. I'm saying you, you can't have it, I'm trying to figure out why it does, why it widens up like it does. It looks like it cuts in by that first lot.
Right.
For parallel parking, right?
Yeah, parallel parking. This is private. They can do.
They can do. Okay. As long as it's private, we're good.
Yes, private.
The slip lane is private and there's parking on one side.
Yeah.
On the, on the opposite.
And I think it's great.
Into the homes.
Yeah. But it looks like it's only wide enough when you're coming in, if you're heading on Sentinel Ridge Road. If you're heading northbound and you took a right, maybe it's just an optical illusion, but it only looks like it's about 20 feet wide right there. Maybe 12. It doesn't look as wide as it should be.
Well, the narrow, it's narrow, that'll help slow it down.
And it is a slip road one way?
Yes. Yeah, it's one way. It's one way.
Okay. Well, because the only reason why I question is this right here, they go in on, off Sentinel Ridge. Are we going to have people turning right to get to their houses some? I mean, obviously they're going to have to take a right and then the left and things like that. But if it's one way, because it's technically east to west, no, west to east, one way, and then north to south, one way. On this one. Is that correct?
South to north.
Well, west to east in this section right here, and then north to south.
Let's have Brendan tell us what, what it's supposed to be. He designed it. Brendan, what's going on?
Am I unmuted?
Oh, okay. Yeah, Brendan.
There we go. Okay. Yeah. So, so these are private roads. One way only. I understand the concern here, especially in phase nine, where, you know, the proximity to 138 South. We're fine to eliminate that. And really, the only purpose of that entrance was simply for a convenience factor for those north facing lots that you see on the screen there. We're, we're fine to eliminate that. Those individuals, or those homeowners would have to come down 138, turn into the slip lane, which is intentionally narrow right there because they are one way. And then yes, Adam, that does open up to parallel parking, but they would just need to drive around the slip lane to get to their home. And then as they leave, they would just Open up to parallel parking, but they would just need to drive around the slip lane to get to their home, and then as they leave, they would just. Uh, continue eastbound and pop out on the next um. Uh, I guess exit onto one hundred and thirty-eight south.
So everybody would have to go past one hundred and thirty-eight on Sentinel to that, the where I was asking that question. And then everybody would walk away all the way down.
Well, yeah, I mean, I I know you say everybody, but there's only. Yeah.
I almost think that's more unsafe to have them turning left, cause if they turn right on. To Sentinel Ridge, then turning left across two heavily traffic, heavily. And lots faster speeding, they were turned left across two lanes to turn into that, I almost feel like it's safer to have it there, so they're not going down and turning left. I mean, some will have to anyways, a few will have to, those three homes.
One one thing to keep in mind, too, is that intersection of Sentinel and one hundred and thirty-eighth will have stop control of some sort, I think they uh when we. When you as a city had built that as well as Riverton, um, they had put in um. Conduits for a traffic signal, so there will be some stop control there, just food for thought.
Which is another reason I would want to have those accesses either eliminated or moved further away from the influence of the signal. Cause you're gonna have people queuing up in the left turns to turn, you know, westbound to southbound movement, you're gonna have that traffic backing up, they're not gonna be able to get into that.
So Andy, you're saying, take these off and have this be the entrance and not the exit?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think I know what you mean by this and that.
Oh, sorry, so so the middle one, the middle one attached to Sentinel Ridge. He wants to close that off to where you can only enter off of one thirty-eight?
No, 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 no.
He wants to get rid of the one right above the two lots.
Okay, yeah, he wants to get, he wants to get rid of the middle, middle two that you see on this page, how about that? The two you see on this page right at the top.
Yes.
He wants to close those off.
And I'm good with that, but my my question is, since now we have established and Brandon correct.
I think that makes more sense.
There is a sidewalk along Sentinel, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
There's a trail that's on the east side of Sentinel right now, uh, I think it's a ten-foot-wide asphalt trail. So there could be the option of keeping that at grade essentially um to create that. Tabletop appearance, I guess, um, but I think I I don't know if we have that luxury on the other side.
I would like to try and go towards that, but my question I have is if I'm if I'm walking south. Down Sentinel Ridge and I live where Phase Nine's label is. And I wanna do it, is there a, is there a sidewalk or anything that gets me over to from that corner? Or do I just walk across the grass?
Uh, so there is a sidewalk that uh does, and you can actually kind of see it, uh, there is a sidewalk that does go around the inside of the slip lane. A separate sidewalk from the trail that's already there.
Yeah, I see that, but I'm just saying, so so if I don't wanna walk across the grass, I gotta go all the way to the, to the in, the inlet.
That's correct.
Correct, there is no connection right there, that that's all I'm trying to make sure, there is no. If if you were, if you're in a wheelchair, for lack of a better term, I have to go all the way down to the south. Then come back to go to Phase, where the Phase Nine label is.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I think, I think you're right, Adam, it would make sense from somewhere in there to to have a sidewalk that cuts across.
Yep.
And and I think the issue is, a- and it's probably because we're just at such a big scale, uh, the drawings are all so far out. That it's hard to see the walkability of the neighborhood, I know you have a ton of it. But I think that the landscaping's overshadowing that walking route for me, I think that's why my concern.
I I think at the corner, you almost need a walkway that cuts right across from the corner almost, in that area.
I concur.
Because that's the lights and that's where people are gonna cut across and be coming from and and so.
Yeah, that's a two hundred, two hundred and fifty foot, you know, distance to go south, i- it would be good to have a connection through that.
Twenty-foot, twenty-foot connection from the corner in.
Yep.
Yeah, I I think the slip lanes are great, I think you guys have done it, but I think there's a couple details we need to still work out the bugs on.
And and I personally like Andy's idea of connecting those two and and closing them off. And then having the sidewalk from the corner that that uh you just mentioned, Adam, or something to that extent. Those are the two things I'd like to see.
Yeah, I just have concerns with it being being signalized, those are too close to the intersection. Good point, Jackson, way to bring all this up, Jackson, good job.
So maybe a couple things, maybe they can, uh, well, I don't know what you're gonna do tonight, I'm guessing you're gonna continue this, but maybe not.
I need to get this approval with the condition.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
I personally would like to see it, cause I think it's gonna be hard, especially on the other side, I'd like to see how the walkway along Sentinel Ridge is the dress.
Because what I was gonna suggest is maybe they need to bring back an exhibit showing. Kind of like you said, a landscaping exhibit, but without the landscape, just a sidewalk connection exhibit to kind of.
So we could approve the plat and then just have the landscape come back?
You could absolutely do that, yeah.
Yeah, well, and the north side is Riverton, right?
Yeah, and I was gonna ask, and this is kind of, I guess, Brandon's problem, not ours, but like on this Phase Nine, it looks like they have a slip lane that matches up across the street.
Yeah.
So if they change it on this side, they're gonna probably wanna change on the other side, but that's.
I think that's what we'd like to see, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed.
So it also makes this a more residential feel. Without without having cars turn in here and turn in the end, and it 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 almost makes it like a typical neighborhood. You wouldn't have a turn-in right in the middle of the neighborhood and on the ends and everywhere else, it almost gives it a flow of a full neighborhood. If you kind of, if you connect it, I think.
But again, who's gonna be turning, it's gonna be ten homes turning in there, it's not.
Right.
Well, that's what we wanna keep it to, is ten homes.
Yeah, but but my my thought is, is you turn in here and then this becomes a safer area for. A lot more kids, everything else that may or may not, I mean, it almost gives you a cul-de-sac feel, it gives you a little different neighborhood feel.
If you don't have that closed off, it's gonna affect operations, that signal, that one thirty-eighth.
Even when it's a ride-in, or it's only ten houses and only, only one-way street, I I just don't see that.
Well, you, what if you're heading south on Sentinel Ridge and you turn left at one hundred and thirty-eighth and then want to turn left into that Phase Nine? It's just, you're, you're in the way, or I guess you turn right in there.
Yeah, somebody's trying to take a left out of this section and cross all the lanes, I don't, I don't know if I like that.
Yeah.
But they're gonna have to do that anyways, those first two homes are anyways.
Yeah.
We we would love to close that off, I have no problem closing that off, um, and then just to avoid any conflict to that intersection, I think is great.
You you either close it off, or I'm okay if maybe even shift a little east. To slide it down a little bit, maybe unfortunately, the first two or three homes may not be able to access it, but the rest can, just get it away from the intersection even, that'd be an option.
I just think it makes sense to close it off.
So.
I also think when we see it just showing which way the one-way streets are flowing, just so we can all make sure it's what we think it is.
Yeah. It's interesting, if you look at what's happening on the north side of that, with the, you've got a little bulb out, right, to help keep traffic from going the wrong way. On those entrances, you don't have those little pop-outs on the uh, on the south side.
So can you tabletop the other side of Sentinel Ridge with the trail on that side or not, Brandon?
On the Riverton side?
No, on Sentinel, on on the west side of Sentinel Ridge Road.
So on the the east side, there's that existing trail on uh in there, on the west side, there's not an existing trail. And so the sidewalk goes around the outside of the slip lane, but um. A- and and I think the park strip or the uh, yeah, the park strip between Sentinel and the slip lane is only. Uh, it's eight or twelve feet, I can't remember off the top of my head, so, and that's just intended to be landscaped uh along there. So there's not the option on the west side to do that, but we can most certainly, I mean, if it's a crosswalk, if it's. Um, a tabletop, I have no problem doing those.
See, and I don't, I'm not a fan of tabletop at all, I think if you drive through, and we went through this with that one study we did. The calming effect's gonna be that single lane with cars parked on the side, that's gonna be an automatically, that's gonna be a calming effect. I think if you were to have crosswalks, like with a different texture, like the brick, I think that's, you know, especially after what, you know. Cody's saying too, if it's a speeding between them more, I think there's other calming measures we can put in, like a crosswalk, they're gonna have the same effect without. The speeding between and without the issues, I mean, our city's not gonna plow it, but somebody's gonna plow that, and that's, that is. But that's my personal, I mean, I know I'm, I might be in the minority in that, but I think there's, I think there's other ways to calm traffic than a tabletop.
My thought is, I agree, Lauren, I don't like the, well, it's not that I don't like it, I don't think it's a right application at this location, especially when it's so narrow. The traffic's gonna be slowing down to get into that, you don't need to raise that and cause additional problems, it's gonna be slow enough, get people off from Sentinel Ridge, you don't. You don't want them so slow that it's starting to, you know, people are getting aggravated on Sentinel Ridge as well, you do want enough of a flow to get them off that. And not speed, and I think the opening that you've got there. And manages that, and if you've got uh a crosswalk or something right there, because your trail is right there. But I think that's enough calming.
Well, my thought would.
My question is for walking, walkability, ignore cars, I know you wanna get cars to where they're going. But the walking, it, to me, where those slip roads go tie into the main public streets. As well as the the wider, normal, traditional road, it's like intersection after intersection, and so that's why I think you should have it raised. Not not for calming of traffic, but to make it so you can see the pedestrians.
And that's where I think you have a different, you put the, you know, you, I've seen it where you brick it, you know, it's paved and then it's brick. You know, that, to me, I see that coming and I'm automatically.
Yeah, I I feel like, I feel like um putting one random tabletop doesn't really have a sense of. It doesn't flow very well, it doesn't really add to it. Um, at least with what I've seen with tabletops where it really is applied well, is it's almost like a consistent. Path area to say, hey, this, this is, this path is strictly really used for. Uh, pedestrians and runners and bikers and cars are secondary in every instance. And I don't feel like this is somewhere where that's applied as well, or should be applied. And so I don't view this as a very good solution, like out here around um Herrmann Town Center. Different areas applying something like that, I think makes a lot of sense.
I agree.
But I don't think here it 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 shows, it's not having it, because in Town Center, when all the commercials built. The, it's really gonna be, these are all walking areas and we allow cars to go through, versus this is where cars drive and people walk through this area. And so I think it has a different feel.
And I see Adam's point, we need to make sure that there is a nice walkability here, and 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 maybe we need to, maybe that's why we need to continue this and have it come back. So we can see how you're gonna maintain the flow of, you know, pedestrians, whether it's tabletop or something else, you know.
I don't, tabletop, I'm not sold on tabletop either, but what I'm noticing is Sentinel Ridge look, trail, the trail itself looks pretty wide. If you zoom in the photo that we're looking at, and then it goes across the slip roads. And goes to a regular five-foot sidewalk, then crosses the street and then goes through a regular five-foot sidewalk, and then goes back to a big, what looks to be a big trail.
So this trail, Adam and uh maybe this is a question for Brandon, but this trail, is this the one? That has somewhere where it connects over to the trail next to the regional park? Because if this is a trail like that, where it has the the flow, if it turns from trail to sidewalks to. To here's another walkway to get over to this big, if it's part of the full trail system of the. Of the, what is it, Welby Canal Trail, then this needs to have a real consistent flow, which it doesn't, to me. If it's used just for these neighborhoods, for this general area up here, then it's a little different.
Probably is a safe walking route, I'm assuming.
That's what I'm guessing.
I don't think it's probably a connection into the trail, I'm assuming it's a safe walking route.
Well, there is, the trail is on that east side.
Right, I'm, right.
But I view, I view them differently depending on how the use is.
Right.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, yeah, I agree, if if we need to make sure that the, it's pedestrian-friendly. That is clearly delineated and we're not impacting the pedestrians as they flow through here, cause you're right, Adam, there is a lot of accesses right here. Let's give it back to Brandon and have him come back to us and, you know, figure out solutions, I think we've given him some ideas and some thoughts, and maybe that's what we do, just.
Well, and I think. And so here's where, here's where I'm gonna come from, I think, uh, and I don't know. We're near closed, near near closure on the discussion, but I'm thinking if we approve the plat, but then maybe just have the landscaping come back, I think that would be. That's kind of where I'm headed.
And and I don't have the opposition to that either. So, but but I do, I I view, I view trails and sidewalk or walkways a little bit differently. The trail is the person that's running for five miles and zones out on their earbuds. Versus the sidewalk is is, I'm walking around my neighborhood with my family and things, and it's a whole different. Awareness as you're doing those two different things.
Jonathan, do you wanna come explain maybe the intent of what, why that trail was put in along Sentinel? I know you want to, you came up here just for this.
And you're speaking to the one that's on the east side, correct? Yeah, both pedestrian and B uh and bikes is the intent. Very, very similar to to your point. Um, i- it's it's sounding like the, though this is trying to get worked out as part of the motion, is that, if that's. If that's the case, I have the recommendation with, I don't know, I I'm, for the engineering department, I guess I'm struggling with. Um, my recommendation be, I'm uncomfortable with the, those tables for now, I guess, I just wanted to make sure that that was stated. Anything else?
Yeah, I think, I think the majority of us don't like the idea of the tabletops, so.
But we need some clear delineation for.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So let's let Brandon come back with some.
And and see, this is, this is where my mindset in questioning is, so there's this trail that was put on this side. Well, when I think of like asphalt trail, I think of what we put on by Bastion and what we put. Um, like, like next to Mountain View, granted, it's north of our city where it's like this, but. Or or the Welby Canal Trail, they're consistent and flowing and. There is not a hindrance by traffic, I mean, you go underneath the traffic, you go over the traffic, it's consistent. There's very few places where it stops. To this, it feels like just a sidewalk we turned into a asphalt trail. And 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 I I could be wrong, but I mean, is this, this isn't connecting over to the Welby Canal Trail. It it's, it's only the short portion, isn't it?
That's correct.
So you just want the concrete, is that what?
No, I'm just wondering, it doesn't feel like, it feels like it's just sort of thrown in there to me, it's not connecting to anything.
Except for, except for, Jonathan just said it's for bikes, so if it's bikes, this trail goes through one. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight intersections within like a quarter mile.
Yeah.
So that's why I agree, normally I'd be okay with approving it and letting it uh just going forward with the plat, but I don't know that we know enough what's going on. Especially when it goes back to, as you cross from the slip roads to. Wherever the roadway right-of-way's are that are twenty-nine feet wide, whatever those roads are called, that cross Sentinel Ridge, the perpendicular sections of that. I don't know that it it transitions very well back and forth between there, cause it's doing what you're saying, it's going from a trail to a sidewalk to a trail to a sidewalk.
And see, for me, if it's that trail all the way, maybe it connects the potential new neighborhood park down to the high school. And it's, it's part of what the cross-country team runs, they run up here, over Welby down or something, it, yeah.
I I agree with you, and my son is a cross-country runner, so that's why I'm thinking of that many intersections.
I want it to flow, I want it to not be this choppy, i- it feels like it's really choppy, it feels like sidewalk.
And that's the only reason I thought about throwing out the tabletop, Chris, to be honest, I don't care if it's that, it's just, I think that's the only reason I think you could have a good flowing trail.
Sure.
I don't think we installed it to be part of a major trail system, like I think it was, like you, it's, it's more of a sidewalk than a trail.
Okay. So.
We built the road, we built the road without a sidewalk.
That.
And then came in later and added the the trail.
Yeah, so maybe the background's important, right, that's, that's the reason wasn't put in there, there was no sidewalk at the time, there was a lot of pressure for a sidewalk to be installed, and that was the reason it was there.
Yeah, and I guess I'm just wondering, is it gonna look out of place, here's the, I mean, what is that, uh? A football field, two fo- fo- yeah, it looks like about a football field, football field, maybe two of this, and then it's just gone again. So I I I just, some of this aesthetic in my mind saying, does this look right, or does it look like it's out of place? So, and I I I mean, that's really where my mind went with it.
Yeah.
So you're saying there's no real way to walk, if you wanted to walk, stay on that.
You go through eight intersections on this.
But you're gonna get that with your. But you're going to get that with your with the pullouts with the. I mean, that's what.
But it's also a sidewalk on the inside of the slip lane.
Is that where we should put crosswalks then? Is that the intent is to crosswalk it at?
I think the intent is that if you're walking, you're going to walk down the inside.
Down the inside.
Because again, on the west side, there that that trail doesn't exist, right? You're going to go on down.
Because I can almost imagine having the trail on the outside of the slip and having it closed off in the one area. And it just goes all the way around, nonstop. I can almost imagine that, but I can't imagine it stopping every. Intersection and there's just a bunch with the asphalt trail as much. I guess I guess that's where my mind's going. It just doesn't seem like it fits or flows there.
Almost seems like instead of bulging back out on the wider roads, it should go straight across. Back behind the slip roads. If you were to connect the slip road sidewalk. Across straight, kind of like what they did in Rose Creek phases one through six. I almost think if you could do that, I I I just think overall it just has some walkability challenges.
Well, and personally for me, as I look at this a little more Sentinel Ridge Trail. I'm not going to walk on that. If I'm walking down there, I'm going to walk away from Sentinel Ridge. I'm going to follow the sidewalk that's going in front of the homes. Along the slip road.
Right.
So why do we even have that? I mean, almost.
So we're saying eliminate the the asphalt paths in there?
Why even have that there when you've got your sidewalk that's going around already around the slip roads?
Or or push it back, push the roadways forward more and push that trail, make it wider behind the slip roads.
Yeah, yeah, not next to Sentinel Rage, but along the slip roads.
Is there a reason that we determined to keep that trail where it is? But.
If there's a sidewalk on the inner, so basically two side, because you're looking at two sidewalks, the inner, the one closest to the main road doesn't serve a purpose.
Again, we put that in after the fact. We built the road, didn't have a sidewalk, came in to put the trail. And then these guys kind of designed around that because we determined we wanted to keep that trail section there.
If it's if it's okay, can I can I ask the question to the applicant really quick? I think there's some back, no, there's some, there's some background information. Well, let me just say this, I guess.
You can ask anything you want.
There was some infrastructure savings is my understanding there.
Brandon, are you, can we unmute Brandon if he's, okay?
I'm unmuted, I think.
Okay.
There you go. So what was the question then, Jonathan? Sorry.
Go ahead, Brandon, go ahead and ask it.
No, I don't know what the question is. You ask it.
There there, so the question is, is what what is the intent? Right of of just cutting half of that as you're, is that, someone's got to help me with the other question.
Question is, why are we keeping that trail there? I thought we were keeping that. Trail section there because we wanted to keep it, not because they wanted to keep it.
So I guess the background on that trail, obviously, as both Harriman City and Riverton City built Sentinel Ridge Boulevard. Harriman City has, you guys have planned for an extra thirty feet of roadway expansion. Should tracks come down here in the future and that's been planned from one hundred and thirty eighth, which is your Harriman border all the way down through Rosecrest. So there's that thirty foot landscape buffer that's only on the east side of Sentinel. And and I think, you know, I don't know the purpose of the trail system that was placed on the east side. Because it just terminates at one hundred and thirty eighth, Riverton did not continue that same trail system up to, say, one hundred and thirty fourth. So we, you know, out of respect to the, you know, funds that have been placed into that. We want, you know, we're fine to keep that trail along there. And then we did want to just provide a smaller, I think it's either a five foot or six foot sidewalk that goes around. The slip lanes there for, you know, local people that want to walk over to their neighbor's house and drop off a gift, so. I know I, and I don't know if I can share my screen, but I do have a screenshot from the design guidelines that just kind of shows what that corridor will look like. And the intent of it. I don't know if it's possible for me to share it.
Uh, no, Brandon Watson's screen.
That trail's there now.
I had forgotten about.
That trail is there now.
That is why it's wider on that side because of the.
Sure.
The extra thirty feet for U T A.
But but you don't necessarily need to have a trail there.
No.
Right, you need to have the. Yeah, the trail's there and I used to get it. They're trying to maintain it.
So my thought, my thought is if we're putting a trail in.
It's already there.
Okay, because. Yeah, my thought literally is connect the one part and then go down to the other part to Wellby. To where it's at least a consistent fill. Say, if I'm on this, I know it goes to Wellby and it goes to the parks.
Yeah.
And and that's where my mind goes, that that there's a reason why it's like that versus. We just put something there in that area and it it may be taken away at one point.
That trail's there and that's why I think they're just trying to preserve it, but I don't know if it needs to be. Yeah, it's there.
So they're not adding, it's already.
They're not adding, it's already there.
Yeah.
The trail's there. They're building around.
Uses through Riverton to one hundred and thirty fourth.
It ends at one hundred.
It ends one hundred thirty eight.
Thirty eighth in Riverton and then drums over to a sidewalk. On that east side.
Yeah, my thought is if we have it there, we need to try to make a purpose out of it. My my thought is if if there's a way to make it to where it connects to Wellby. And so it goes by the park, it connects to the other potential park. There is this one asphalt trail that. You know, if you get on this, you can get to this park in the trail and you can get to the other park. And so everybody knows that this connects all of those things and then it has a purpose.
Right.
And it's something that is easy for kids. They're like, oh, I jump on the asphalt one and I get to the parks. Or or yeah, I get on that and I go to the trail head. To me, that makes sense then.
I think that that does make sense, but I think that's more than the intent was. I think the intent was the city didn't have a walkway, so they threw a bunch of pavement down.
Yep.
Correct, Jonathan? And Bryn, for schools, that's what is there.
This is Blake. Can I jump in on that really quick?
Please.
So the uh the asphalt path, if you look at the future development with people coming from Riverton from the north. If you, it's part of the safe walk route to the elementary school that's actually located east of the high school. And so if you end up having the new developments come in from Riverton, they would have to come in and then come across the. What it come across this the slip lane and get in front of the homes to hit the sidewalk. If we, or or you could rip out the asphalt path and put a sidewalk in, but like you were saying, we built the asphalt path. And we were going to utilize that to uh help with the safe walk route to the elementary school from the houses that will be coming to the north.
But Blake, if there's sidewalk twenty feet to the right, if you look at the screen that's being presented. Can't that be the safe walk route?
Well, they got to cross the intersection at one thirty eighth. And so they would have to come in and then cross the slip lane to get onto that sidewalk. Does that make sense? Yeah.
Which is why I was bringing up that. I don't know, I I I think we were at a point where there's a lot of unknowns. We need to have the city staff and the developer kind of come up with what they recommend. With some good routes since it's off of the off of. Safe walking routes and school district stuff. I I think we just need to see a plan of what the the way to flow that is, is my opinion.
And I mean, the only other thought or recommendation, I'll say it again, is if we have the one potential park or that may become a commercial entity. And then have the path going down the down on that side. If it does continue on, and maybe somebody can help me, what's this road that that sort of goes to the other park by Wellby? You know? Uh, the one below it is if we had the asphalt path on that north side. That sort of stops at Wellby, so it goes all the way through. Because to me, it looks like it's almost a connection all the way to both parks and the Wellby Trail. And and to me, that serves more of a purpose and that's just a thought.
So it 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 looks like Watchman Way is the one that he's showing that you can see the flow back and forth. Brandon, can you show us where Watchman Way intersection is? There you go. And then the farther. And then the next one is Monument. Sorry, Defender Drive, right, is the middle one that doesn't connect. And then the next one's Monument Peak. And I think what right by Monument Peak, there's a little, there's a single family lot that has this weird. Property line that they own out to accommodate that little bit of slip right where your hand is. I think we just need to adjust some of the property lines and right of ways there because I just, I don't think it makes sense that they own around the corner. And you're pushing them all the way around. They almost own a four sided lot.
We would be fine. Is this Watchman Way here? I don't have it labeled on the screen, but I think that's Watchman Way. On the north side of that, I think we have. This is a sixty foot wide road, so it is already a larger park strip and a, I think, a six foot sidewalk instead of a five foot sidewalk. We're fine to bump that sidewalk out. We do have room along there to make that, you know, eight feet. And if you wanted to make it asphalt, I'm fine with that so that those that are coming along this trail from either direction. Can hit that asphalt trail and have that continuous uh trail system to the park. I'm fine with that. I also do think the trail system along Sentinel does terminate at some point, especially when there's stop control here to get over to this. Whether that's a civic use or a park of some sort. Or a commercial that, you know, there, it it does have a final destination at that point as well, so.
So I I think at least the three things that we talked about, and tell me if there's more guys, is the slip roads potentially shutting off two of the areas. A corner on the slip roads, a corner to the inner sidewalk. And then causing the asphalt trail to continue to where it's got pretty much two connection points. The only thing that I would say, Brandon, that that you didn't say is I think that asphalt would go along that. South side of that park all the way to Wellby Canal. So it would connect to Wellby Canal versus just to the park, so.
That's the city, that's the city will be doing part.
Yes, yes, but that's just the 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 full thought process, so.
Makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, and so is there anything else, guys, to to talk about with this? Michael, do you have any comments?
Yes, and regardless of of the commission's vote tonight, I wanted to just explain a little bit of maybe staff's approach. Remembering again that this is essentially a preliminary level of design. There there is a lot of detail that's been submitted before you tonight, and I really do appreciate the fact the commission. Art, you're looking at these details. That's fantastic. We have, as you all know, an M D A that has attached to it a set of design guidelines. In fact, this one image that Brandon has before you on the screen right now is one of those images. In administering any preliminary approval that the commission grants. The next step, of course, is really that final technical review. And and there's always some refinement, you know, between the preliminary and the final review. I would look to the M D A and these design guidelines as being. The 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 uppermost, the prime level of the governing governing control document. And then where this is modifying essentially the underlying zoning or in some cases, like for example, we have. Different cross sections for roads that we we don't have in our standard cross sections. We would follow the M D A for those things first. So for example, I'm looking at the design guidelines, page twenty nine. And it's showing that the interior sidewalk is actually six feet wide. Their plans right now are showing five feet. So we would, we would follow the M D A's approved guidelines and say that that should be six feet. That would be a. A refi- technical refinement. We would move from preliminary to final. So that that's kind of how we administrate it. However, I think you have identified a number of concerns. It sounds like you want a response to. At a future meeting, again, if that's your vote, that's what we would, will be, you know, the applicant and staff will be happy to try and address those concerns. But there is always, you know, again, a refinement between preliminary and final, and that's what we would do. We would look to the M D A and the design guidelines first. And then look at the underlying zoning and the engineering standards of the city second to address these issues, so.
Thank you, Michael.
Uh, Jackson, do you do you have another comment? I always ask if you're if you're green.
Yeah, I have one one final comment that's a separate issue. It was, I I'd just like to briefly address the. Resident comment that talked about density. And just want him to know that we do hear you and just, but at the same time, we are. This, the the vote on the density was back in April. And so that is kind of a decision that, you know, is is already passed, and so we apologize if you were not aware at that time. But so just that's one thought I wanted our resident to know is that we do. Know that understand and we do know that there is concern about density. But that was something that was earlier in the process.
And one thing on top of that, Jackson, that I think is appropriate to share here is since we we did have Susie earlier talking with us. Those developments that have. M D As, currently, we have built forty seven thirty seven. So four thousand seven hundred and thirty seven multifamily and single family five thousand six hundred and ninety nine units. And so it sounds like it's way skewed, but then when you talk about the final vested of where everything's going to end up. And this is outside of this is citywide, there's going to be ten thousand two hundred and fifty single family with only six thousand five hundred and eighty five. So there's a small beat increase in the multifamily and a large increase in the single family in the future. And so that's that's the built versus the vested. And so that was something that was brought to our attention before that. I think if you are listening, that that's something good to know overall from the city perspective.
That, and that, yes, we are concerned about density and we do work with our developers on that. I know on that, as a side note. Well, this is, does have a higher density than quarter acre, single family. There's another jurisdiction I'm working with where they're looking at. Five hundred units on four acres. And so this is obviously much less. Yep.
And maybe one other point towards the the high density, this is the the best location for high density. We talked about this earlier. Offline, but if you're going to have high density along these major transportation corridors are the place to have that. We don't want these further east, or excuse me, further west in the city. This is the location to have those higher densities, so.
When we talk about, when we mentioned that, we're talking about Mountain View and then also Bangater, that's just east of there.
Yep, so.
Brandon, while I've got you here, I would make a recommendation to just moving forward while I'm thinking about it. There are. I'm hearing a lot of parking is taking place in the residential neighborhoods by the high school, just to avoid paying the parking permit fee. I would, if you look over here north in, there's certain areas, they say no student parking. Like over here in Suncrest across from Harriman High, I would suggest very much putting up signage that says no student parking. Because they will flow into these residential neighborhoods to park, so.
All right, any other comments, Brody?
Yeah, Jackson, this is Brody.
Well, Adam.
Your your thoughts on in our packet page seventy nine? I don't know if you can go to that.
And in the meantime, Adam, did you have a comment?
Mine is just ready to make a motion, but I'm ready whenever you are.
Okay, one last, we're waiting, I guess, Brody had a question for Jackson. What was the question specifically, page seventy nine?
Page seventy nine of our packet, it's it's just.
That one right there.
One more.
Oh, I got seventy nine is.
Uh, I think it's a couple. It's it's the side elevation again.
The side elevation.
Keep going, right there.
Uh, one, one more, I think. There we go. I'm just curious your feedback from an architectural perspective. To me, the side elevation of the one above. To me, it feels disconnected. It it feels like three homes put together. So I'm just, my comment would be if either wrapping the materials from the front around. Just feels odd off to me. I kind of like it personally, but yeah.
Yeah, that's my, but I'm one.
This is what you approved for the first.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what I was thinking. So this has already been approved in this process.
That was, that was, yeah, we we had this discussion in April, if I remember correctly.
So I think originally there was no, no depth in in this on the sides at all. It was all one material.
Yeah, we're just flat.
Yeah, we got.
See, this is an improvement over what we had before and we had discussed it before, so. I know it, there's some elements to it that I would probably personally design a little differently, but I would say in general it meets. Design guidelines, so.
Um, well, at this time, if there's no other comments, we'll look to this body to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to continue item, I'm sorry, is it three point one?
Three point one.
Without date to address walkability, traffic flow and trails.
Motion made by Adam.
I'll second.
Uh, second by Andy. We'll call for a vote. Andrea? Andrea?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Brody?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Sorry, trying to get my mic, yes.
Okay. All right, that's a motion to continue. We'll move on to item 3.2, which is a request for final site plan approval for mountain ridge phases. Is there any additional stuff from staff on this item?
No, but I would just again clarify, not clarifying, request. Please let the applicant know right now.
Specifically what items?
Specifically what your concerns may be. Let's not bring it back in two weeks when I won't be here and I don't care. You know, but let's not bring up 10 new items in two weeks or whatever. So let's, if there's anything else, speak now.
Okay.
All right, my last motion, that was my issues.
Okay, and then anything else from the applicant?
No, I don't have anything on item 3.2 to add.
Okay, thank you. It looks like Michael might have a comment.
Wanted to say, we'll, we'll work with the applicant if you again table this item. Again, we'll just look a little more carefully at those design guidelines. You know, I noticed, you know, there were some trees that were indicated in the MDA that didn't make it on the landscape plan. So we'll, again, that's more of just a refinement, so we'll work with them.
Okay, then we'll look for this body to make a motion unless there's additional items they'd like to talk about.
Was this, was this on public hearing as well, or is it?
This is not.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to continue item 3.2.
A second by Adam.
Second, sorry.
Andrea?
Yeah.
Andrea with a second, sorry. I apologize, I spoke over you.
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Brody?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And Jackson? And Michael, do you feel comfortable with items we talked about in working with? Okay, all right, thank you. We'll go into item 3.3. This is on for a public hearing as well. We'll look at city staff for additional information.
All right, this one is fairly straightforward. Oh, Mike's going to clean that off. And this is a plat amendment for LVA Phase 1, like I said. And you can see where it is there on the vicinity map. This plot was approved a while ago. They're, they're not moving three units. Well, they are moving three units, but they're units that they already have. They're just adjusting them, kind of reallocating them within the phase. So, and they can explain it to you a little bit, but you can see, so on the right-hand side of your screen, kind of where the circle entrance is, this is the new one, so they're adding a three-plex there, basically. These are not additional units, these are part of the units. The number of units has not changed. They're still meeting their open space requirement. And there's the rendering right there. So you can see they're still meeting their open space requirement, so the exact same number of units. It just, just shifting around where those units were a little bit.
Okay. Thank you, Bryn. If the applicant's here.
Good evening, Loyal Hume here for the applicant. Nice to see you all again. We're missing Adam tonight, though. Adam, we need you here, man.
He's here.
This is probably the simplest deal you'll deal with this year in that all that we're doing is reallocating three units from two, our Phase 2 to Phase 1. The only reason we're back before you tonight is because it was a plat file. So it's a technical issue. We have to come back and kind of dot the i's and cross the t's. But all that's happening is we're moving three units to a different location. No change in anything. Open space is 39%. So we're way, way over on open space. There's no issues. Staff's approved it, engineers approved it. It's been, it's already moved through the process. So this is really just a technical step that we, by your ordinance, have to take. But anyway, if you have any questions, I'm happy to fill those.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Jackson?
At the risk of opening yet another lengthy discussion, would it, would it work better if the access to these three units came off the circle instead of off the road approaching the circle? It's kind of a question for engineering. Oh, Blake Thomas left.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it, want those accessing in the circle. Can we go back previous?
Again, I think Blake and everybody's looked at, I don't think you want it to come off that calming circle. I think you want to have the access come off the main road. That would be very unique and something that, all the engineers like this design much better than our original. So I really don't think you want to go that way. That, I think it would create a lot of issues.
Yeah, and I can see better in this plan right here that it ties, that road has other things tying into it more, okay.
Exactly, great question, but, but I don't think you want to go there.
Okay, I'm glad that was short, thank you.
Adam, do you have a comment, Adam?
I was ready to make a motion, so I'm good.
We got a public hearing first, but we'll get there.
All right, get, I'm ready.
All right, I think we're good. And so we'll now open the public hearing at this time. And I'll turn to Wendy, was there any comments? Seeing no comments, we will close the public hearing, and then we will turn to this body for a motion or additional comment if needed.
I got nothing.
Then we'll look for a motion.
I will move to approve, like to make a motion to approve item 3.3 with, how many recommendations you, with staffs? Seven recommendations. Yeah, that's what it shows.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Andy and a second by Lauren, and we'll call for a vote. Andrea?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Brody?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We'll now move on to legislative items. Item 4.1, which is a request for rezon from A1 to 8.25. This is on for a public hearing as well, and we'll look, we'll look for city staff for additional information.
You guys are going to miss my beautiful PowerPoint.
I am, I like the, I like the colors.
I know, pumpkin, pumpkin, pumpkin.
Yeah.
You better try Michael on that before you go.
Um, okay, we're on 4.1, right, right. This is a public hearing to rezone five acres on 7530 West. This is just adjacent to, kind of High Country, out on the west side of the city. We recently rezoned, a couple months ago, the property just to the north of this, the Oiler property, if you remember. You can see the properties around this are all 8.25. Again, he's just asking for A1 to 8.25. There's the vicinity map, so you can see where we are. Again, this is the general plan, agricultural, residential in this area, so the 8.25 zone complies with that. This is the proposed subdivision. You're not looking at the subdivision right now, but proposed. He is combining his property with the Oiler property to the north, so it'll be a 10-acre subdivision. When you see this, you're just doing the rezone first, and then you'll see the subdivision. Again, so this is the property, they're just the aerial. That's what I've got, again, you're just having a public hearing, make a recommendation to the city council on the rezone. You could do a ZC if you want. I don't think we recommended one. Really, it's not really necessary because of the 8.25 zone and the density criteria. So the density kind of works itself out that way through the subdivision. So again, this is not for public hearing and then recommendation. And the applicant is on the line, so.
Okay, we'll look to the applicant if they have additional information on this.
Do we know? Can you hear me okay?
Oh, we can, thank you. And just state your name, if you don't mind.
Joe Darger. Really don't have a lot to add. I think this is pretty straightforward. Been a resident and a developer. I developed a lot of the neighborhoods around here. This is the last piece left. Really have done everything I think that, that really the residents want, keeping bigger lots and nicer homes for this area. I plan on continuing to live in this area, so, yeah, just looking to rezone it to make it consistent. So I'm the, I've been here for 30 years and I'm the, you know, I build all the weed fields and I'm the last weed field left, so I'm trying to, to finish it out.
Good. All right, thank you, Joe. This is on for a public hearing, so, well, first off, is there any questions for the applicant? No, all right, then, thank you so much, Joe. This is on for a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing at this time. Okay, we have one comment that we received electronically that Wendy will read to us.
All of the neighborhoods surrounding this property of Joe Darger are quarter to one, a quarter to one-third acre lots, and some are larger. My home, which is four lots from this property, is nearly one-third acre. I am afraid if Mr. Darger's property is rezoned to 10,000 square feet, lots and smaller homes are built there, it will negatively, negatively impact my property value and that of my neighbors. I oppose this rezone as written. If the rezone were for lots similar in size to our neighborhood, then I would be okay with it. Thanks, Don Hancock.
All right, thank you, Wendy. And seeing that there's no one else to share additional comments, then at this time, we will close the public hearing and look to the planning commission for additional discussion.
Could we, could we address the residents' concern first? Maybe we can talk, have Wendy talk about that this minute, or not, or Bryn talk about that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And maybe just talk about the different zones around it and this zone and, yeah.
So what they're asking for is the same zone as what's all around it, you know, the 8.25 zone. It is kind of confusing because the zone, you know, allows 10,000 square foot lots. But as you guys know, you don't necessarily get 10,000 square foot lots because of the density. So the density is the 1.8 units per acre, up to 2.5 with the density criteria. Everybody else around there is probably about 2.3, 2.4 units per acre. What they're asking for in their proposed subdivision, which again, we're not looking at right now, but I think they're like at 2.1. So again, they have half-acre lots along the back, which is what we've required of everybody else next to High Country, and then a lot of third acre lots. So these will be very similar, if not larger than a lot of the lots in the surrounding area.
So to confirm, the rezone would make it the same as this neighbor's property? So it wouldn't.
Same zone, yeah.
It makes it the same as the green, but not the brown behind them, right? Is that correct, Bryn?
It'll make it the same as that darker green, yeah.
Darker green, but then the brown behind is High Country Estates, which is A1?
Which is in the county.
Oh, they're county, yeah.
So to confirm, we wouldn't be allowing any smaller lots than what the neighbor already has?
Correct.
Okay. What the neighbors are allowed, yeah. Additional questions, comments from the planning commission? All right, then if.
Assuming we'll do with flag lot down the road, right? Right?
Well, there's no flag lots in what they propose, right?
Right, no.
Well, we, that's enough for discussion now, it's just.
There are some flag lots on what they're showing on this subdivision. We're not looking at this subdivision right now.
Right.
That does not comply with.
Right, yeah. Just making sure.
I was just gonna say, I think we all say, would say now, we're not supportive of flag lots, but I don't see a problem with the zone.
Right.
Correct, correct. Okay, so are we looking for a motion at this time, or?
I'm ready to make a motion.
All right, yeah, we'll look for a motion then.
I move to recommend approval to city council, the rezone from A1 to 8.25 for item 4.1.
I'll second that.
Motion by Adam, a second by Brody. We'll call for a vote, and this is a recommendation, obviously, to city council. Andrea?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Brody?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And Jackson?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And so that, we'll move on to city council. Item 4.2 is the next item on agenda, which is a text change to the land development code regarding water efficiency standards. This item is on for a public hearing as well, and so.
Jonathan's going to do this is going to be the most exciting thing you guys have heard all night. I mean, maybe the most exciting thing you've heard.
But did he do the PowerPoint?
So this is like fireworks grand finale, grand finale fireworks, but with water.
I can't imagine him doing those pretty leaves around this PowerPoint.
This was his slide he picked out, probably.
Come on now.
I thought for sure you.
So I hate to even start this way, but Heidi Shagerd was supposed to give this presentation, and so now I'm here, right? She, and I am so sorry to disappoint that I'm the guy here, but we're gonna, I would have it instructed to make this super exciting. So we'll make this super exciting. Um, Dest, do we have a presentation on this to put up by chance?
It's up.
It's up. This is it? Oh.
There you go.
Yeah, sorry about that, I didn't recognize it. See, I'm already starting off, well, we're.
This is going to go well.
Okay, so what we want to do here is, is essentially update, but also apprise the planning commission of the water efficiency standards. We do plan to, well, the intent is to get a recommendation from the planning commission before we go, you know, for the city council. And if it's okay, what I'd like to do is put Chase on the spot just a little bit to explain the intention of these documents that, of the text changes, and if, I think he's on here, and maybe I can search my.
Yep, I'm here. So procedurally, Jordan Valley required that we adopt these water efficiency standards by ordinance. So we looked at this and decided that it was best to create actually a new chapter in order to do that. So one of the documents that you'll see is Title 10, Chapter 32, which is a new chapter in our land use code that officially adopts these water standards, water efficiency standards. We've also made an amendment to Title 10, Chapter 23, which is our landscape plan. We've updated some of the definitions in there and then expanded the plan a little bit to include some of the conditions and requirements of this, of these water efficiency standards. So those are primarily the, the ordinance changes that we're discussing tonight. One, creating a new chapter, and then two, an amendment to an existing chapter, just to add a few definitions, and then expand the scope of the landscape plan requirements.
All right.
Thank you.
Chase. And I did want to also add to this that these documents were sent to Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District for their review. And they've given their approval. They say, hey, this looks, this looks good, and according to what we would like to see. Um, so I guess what this comes down to is first option is, right, you, we adopt and approve the ordinance and amend Title 10. There might formally adopting the water efficiency standards applicable to Harriman City boundaries. If we do not, and this is pointing it out pretty clearly, if we do not approve those, that ordinance, then we would continue to be charged at a rate for what's called the block two rates. And this is the implications of those rates. So we would see having to pay those, so that you see the fiscal impacts for the anticipated growth if we did not adopt this, right? So it would have pretty significant fiscal impact. Um, and just before I go to the next slide, are any questions to this? All right, so the public hearing ends today. We are not aware of any comments that have come in during this time. And then again, we plan to go to a city council, December 9th. And then once, once that gets, if that gets approved, then there's a 90-day, we call it a grace period, that even when it's been adopted, we still keep the same rates as they are for that particular time. And then it's after the 90-day period that, that it actually essentially changes. Um, I think, so that's the, that's, that is the end of my presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
I thought it was exciting.
Thanks, Chris.
No, no, I, at least none for me. Maybe, maybe someone else on planning.
This applies to new construction moving forward.
What's that?
This just applies to new construction moving forward.
This, this applies, um, so January one is the day that it's in effect. However, the, from, from that point on, we have ninety days of the grace period. So it's ninety days from, so three months after January one, January, February, March, right? So March, essentially is when it goes.
So is.
If you were by your, your park strip, it'll apply to you.
If I were to what?
It's not just new construction.
Good.
So if I what?
You decide to land, change your landscaping.
To change it.
Who's gonna enforce that?
Anything existing, that's my, anything's existing.
Grandfathered in, existing. Your grandfathered in.
But I apologize, I didn't understand the question. Do you, that is correct. It does not just apply to contractors as developers, landowners.
Or changes being made.
Or changes, that's correct. The existing ones are not required to change uh, into these, right? They would.
So how does, how is this affected with master development agreements on landscaping and stuff?
Good.
Wow.
Then we'll ask Chase. Chase, how does this affect?
I, I can't hear Bryn. Sorry, Bryn, you have to get closer to the mic.
She said it's a great question.
Oh, it is a great question. Yeah, a- and that's one of the things that we looked at and we, we talked about in depth with Jordan Valley Water is, you know, how does this affect these vested rights? Their recommendation was that we encourage master developers to adopt these standards. We can't force them to, obviously, because of those vested rights. Um, however, we feel that the majority of master developers will come along eventually, depending on what phase this gets implemented in for them and what their build out is at the time. But we cannot, because of the master development agreement and those vested rights, actually enforce these standards on them. And that's something, like I said, we've talked about with Jordan Valley and they're, they're fine with that.
Okay, so, so it would not be a bad idea for when developers come through to just say, are you abiding by the water efficiency standards? And it, and if they say we have a MDA with our landscaping guidelines, say, um, are you willing to adjust that to abide by it better?
Right, and, and it really, it's one of these things that looks good for everyone, right? It, it's like saving baby animals and, and, and doing great things for the environment. No one's, no one's gonna say no, that that's a terrible idea, right? So we anticipate that the majority of developers will jump on board.
All right, okay.
So for example, in Mountain Ridge, we've already talked to Edge about doing it and they are gonna make some changes to.
Okay.
And then this is a code enforcement issue? Is that, who would be?
That's what I was gonna bring up.
It, so it has some implications to, to multiple departments, right? Plan review, um, upfront, all the way through, and building permit as well as in code enforcement as well.
That's well. Yeah, so chapter three, you brought up before is, I like the concept of local scape and it looks great when they maintain it. But when they don't, it looks worse than dead grass. Is, you know, weeds that are feet high. Um, I don't know, what are the, are we looking for more code enforcement to take care of that? I know it's like additional maintenance.
I, I think, I think that's a great question and Chase, it looks like you're ready to speak here, but one, one thing I think that we would, we, we currently have that today as well, right? Regardless of jumping to the next, uh, water efficiency standards here, but um, in what we have found and we have anticipated and that question has been brought up, you know, what is the maintenance like for this? Is, is it easier? Is it harder? What we've heard and our feedback is, um, for the most part, it's actually not as hard as we thought and in some cases easier than mowing and trimming, right? A typical park strip.
Yeah, I would just add what, add to what Jonathan mentioned that, and Heidi would tell us enthusiastically that Jordan Valley Water has done some studies on this and found that a year or two and even three years later, with people who have installed local scapes, they're actually quite well-maintained. Um, maybe even more so than traditional landscaping. And then to answer the enforcement question, the proposed ti- uh, chapter thirty-two actually discusses the enforcement and that falls under the community development director. Um, and then that trickles down into code enforcement.
All right.
Are we gonna educate? I mean, that's what I think we're gonna have to educate, right, the public on?
Absolutely.
This.
Any additional questions for staff?
I don't know about this.
I don't have it.
Okay, thank you, Adam. I, I thought it was very entertaining. It was good.
Very good, very good.
So, um, this, this is on for a public hearing though, so we will open the public hearing at this time. And then it looks like we received no comments electronically. And I think we're good. So we'll close the public hearing at this time and look to the planning commission for additional comments or a motion at this time. And this is recommendation, obviously, to city council.
I'll make a, a recommendation, city council, to approve the text change to the land development code regarding water efficiency standards.
Thank you, Brody.
I'll second that.
Second by Jackson. And we'll call for a vote. Andrea?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Brody?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And Jackson?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. So that moves on to city council. Um, item five is additional chair and commission comments. And I, I think, Jackson, you had one comment you wanted to make at this time.
Yeah, I just had one comment, uh, uh, just wanted to see, make sure that the, uh, commission is in agreement, but, uh, I would like to just recommend that we, uh, an informal, uh, support to the, uh, I don't know if it's be informal or formal, but uh, just let the city council know that we support them in opposing House Bill zero three seven four uh, at the, uh, state of Utah legislature. Uh, we want to make sure that, uh, we're, we as a city are able to keep control of design standards and what is built within our city.
And I'm in agreeance with that.
So am I.
Adam is as well, so.
Was Andy, yep.
And it sounds like this bo- body in general is. Um, and then one additional comment that I wanted to make, and this is just to be on the record, um, I believe at this point, and, and Michael is well versed in this, but we probably need to start getting some standards and, uh, decide how we're gonna approach, approach accessory dwelling units. Um, whether that's through, I guess, ordinances, requirements, however, we end up deciding this needs to be written into the city. But I think we need to start that process and so.
Let's see if Bryn can get that done before she leaves. Tomorrow.
All right, any additional comments from the planning commission?
I, I have one. I just want to thank Bryn for all she did for us. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you, Bryn.
Here, here.
You'll be missed. Not by me.
You will be missed. You will be missed.
Be missed, Bryn.
So, and then, uh, item six, future meetings. Thursday, December third is a planning commission meeting. Uh, Wednesday, December ninth is a city council meeting. And Wednesday, December sixteenth is a joint planning commission city council meeting. Uh, look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, guys.
We will not be meeting on Thursday then, right? We won't be meeting.